Okay, good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, February 21st, meeting of the Town of Dudley Planning Board. President this evening, we have Daniel Edmiston, Vice Chairman, Thomas Chinaki, Clerk, Richard Clark member, David Dergan member, William Scanlon, Town Planner, myself, Guy Horn, Chairman. First item on the agenda, a note that the meeting is being recorded. Our second item on the agenda, Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in store.
Next up, we have approval of minutes from the meeting of January 24th, 2024, and I see that we had meeting minutes sent out by our clerk, amended minutes. Did everybody get a chance to read those? And does somebody want to make a motion to accept the minutes of January 24th?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we accept the minutes of the January 24th, 2024 meeting as presented.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm just checking to see if everybody was here. Okay, so we have two claps here. I'll just pass them around.
I can find the last page here. I will start the second clap.
We got two.
You got two already? Oh, wow. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Efficiency is amazing. Oh, thank you to the clerk. Your efficiency is amazing.
Okay, second item, agenda for new business A and R plans, none this evening, though?
Correct.
Okay, third item, annual update of adult marijuana establishment, 35 to 37 CH staff, says they were invited.
I heard from Nick Adamopoulos, he currently has been sick and doesn't have a voice to come and talk to us.
Okay, so...
Or without a voice.
So I'll be, I've rescheduled him for the next meeting.
Okay. All right. And they're also listed at number five, so I guess we can just...
Right. I had hit within it twice.
Number four, discussion of acceptance of cash security in lieu of covenant for Sophie's Way subdivision. Mr. O'Trover.
Good evening, gentlemen. I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I know anything else on the agenda, I guess. So for those of you who may not recall at the last meeting, I had explained that I've got a situation where I have a potential buyer, well, not a potential buyer, but we're actually under contract for one of the lots on Sophie's Way. And he actually sold his existing house back in, last July, in Worcester. And he and his fiancee and their kid are now, they're living basically with, it's an in-law situation, they're living with, I forget which parents, but they're living with the parents. They're really anxious to start building their house. And under the current covenant, there's a restriction on the current covenant that says that I need to have the binder coat down and the underground utilities in. The reason why we didn't get the binder coat down was because my contractor, the excavation contractor, suggested that we do not put the binder coat down until they trench for the utilities, because his concern was if they hit any large rocks, since it's right on the side of the road, that the large rocks, the removal of the large rocks could end up damaging the brand-new road. So he suggested we hold off. Because of delays with National Grid, we couldn't get that work done. And then we ended up getting into late November and the plants, the asphalt plants closed. And the asphalt plants, according to contractor, are not scheduled to open until, I think, the second week in April. Is that... Yeah. So what we'd like to do is get permission from the board to change the security from the standard covenant that is currently on it to cash security. So at the last meeting, we talked about it, and the planning board said we could move forward with having Jeff Walsh go out there and do the inspection, figure out what needed to be done, what was done, you know, verify what I had already had done, and come up with a number of the costs to complete the subdivision. So the cost he came up with, he rounded it up to $123,000. That cost, he explained to me that that includes all of the work being done at prevailing wage, because he said, "The number you guys are looking for is if I were to walk away and the town had to hire contractors." So all of those numbers in there are going on the assumption that the town is hiring a contractor and paying prevailing wage, which is higher than what I would have to pay. And then he also put in a contingency. I forgot what the percentage is. I didn't...
Twenty percent.
Okay. So he's got the contingency in there also, which I guess covers if there's an increase in cost of materials or whatever. So that's what he came up with. So I, I'm here to tell you that I'd be willing to move forward with that. I've already put financing in place so that I can draw the $123,000 that would be required. The only thing I would ask from the board is that I would have assurances that that would actually guarantee me lot releases, because if I can't get the lot releases, then there's not much point in doing it. Because the building inspector can't issue building permits until he has verification from the board, planning board, that you guys are releasing the lots.
Okay, but if you get in a situation where we release your lot and the individual goes ahead and builds their house, and they, they do it faster than you can get the road paved and the, and the utilities installed, you're going to have a situation where you're not going to get an occupancy permit for that house until it's done.
Well, you can't get a building permit until you has the road from it.
There, there's no way, there's no way that they could get that, that house. If they started construction this week, they couldn't get that house finished to a point where they would be requesting an occupancy permit before the end of April.
Do you already have, do you already have a contractor scheduled for doing your paving work at the end of April?
Oh, yeah. I, I had a contract scheduled to do paving work.
Okay.
Actually, at the end of October, and then it went to November, and then finally, we ran out of time, but he was ready to go then. And I told him, I want him, I want, I want my project to be like first on his dance card when they open up the plants. And he told me, he says, "Just let me know when you're ready to go, and we'll make sure we get it done." And regarding National Grid, I think it was last week at the selectmen's meeting, they approved the moving of the poles, the easement, because it's in the town right-of-way there. They, they took care of all that. They've got a big fat check from me. I've paid for all that. I provided copies of that to Jeff Walsh to verify that. That part of, that part of the electrical conduit, not conduit, the electrical contracting work that National Grid handles has all been paid for.
They gave you a blueprint?
Yeah. Yeah, a good, a good engineering design. Yeah, we had to have that, because you can't, you can't go before the town and petition the town for moving poles if you don't have the design.
Is it in the ground?
Is what in the ground?
The conduit?
Oh, we didn't put the conduit in the ground, because we have a pole that needs to be moved.
It's going to be on that side, though?
Yeah, it's going to be on that side, but it's about 15 feet over.
Talking about the one that's on the left, right? The first one on the left? Is the one that, the house that's under contract, if you're looking at the road?
Well, you can't put utilities in until the road binder is down.
No, I can, I can put the utilities in without the road binder.
You need a road binder, and then they got to measure two feet.
My utilities are in the right-of-way to the side of the road. They're not even in the paved area.
Doesn't matter. National Grid requires the binder coat to be done prior. You put the binder down...
Not what, that's not what the, that's not what the engineer from National Grid told me.
Exactly two feet from their road. They want the binder coat down before you dig the, on the ground, conduit.
The reason I'm asking is because it's going to be driveway on that side, too, right? For that house?
Okay, for the house, the house on the side with the, with the...
What are they trying to sell right now? That's under contract?
No, the one that, the one that's under contract right now, it's the, straight up, it's the, right in the middle, back.
Oh, it's it? It's not even one of the, the two A and Rs that you had?
I didn't have two A and Rs. I only had one A and R.
Which one was the A and R?
A and R was on the left.
Okay, so this one that you have under contract is all the way in the middle?
Yes.
Subdivision?
Yeah.
And do you have the okay from water sewer, too?
I got all the tie-ins already.
Oh, they're already in?
Oh, yeah.
Paid for them.
Oh, yeah. Big money.
You only got sewer, haven't you? You don't have water.
$5,400 per lot. And that's on top of the permit extension, which was 12 grand just for that permit. And that's, that's all permits. That's not even, that's not even putting the shovels in the ground.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, Mr. O'Trover, when would your buyer be looking to start building? What's their start date? What do they have in mind?
They're actually in the process of working with the builder who actually bought the A and R that David had alluded to. And he doesn't, that builder doesn't have anything planned for that lot right now, so he may end up going right to this particular gentleman's house in the back. He wants to use the same builder. But, yeah, we're actually in talks right now of getting that sorted out. But again, he actually can't close that deal either, because it's kind of difficult for the builder to guarantee that he's going to build a house on a lot that the gentleman doesn't own yet, technically.
Like Guy Horn says, you got to have the binder down, utilities in, before a lot release is looking given.
Well, I guess, I handed out part of the subdivision regulations in the section 19 and page 26. So this section covers this situation where if subdivided, it wants to exchange the covenant for another form of security, is allowed to do so, and this sets forth standards by which that happens.
Yeah.
So in this case, he wants to exchange the covenant and put up the, the security.
Yeah.
And I think he's complied with A, B, and C. He's had Jeff Walsh identify the, the work that remains to be done. We have an estimate there, which is 123,000. And he wants to provide a check, which would be cash, given to the town treasurer. And then that final paragraph says, "The planning board, in consultation with its staff, engineer, and other departments, will make a determination on the sufficiency of the submitted estimate. And if such estimate is accepted, a new performance guarantee will be given to the planning board. Upon acceptance by the board of the new guarantee, all applicable lots shall be released from the covenant." So there's nothing in here that says if you put up cash, you have to have the covenant in, I mean, have to have the pavement in. The pavement is only required if you have a covenant.
It's on him.
And in addition to that, this is actually the actual covenant that was approved by the board and is currently recorded, which currently does govern it. And item eight on the covenant says, "Nothing herein shall prohibit the developer from varying the method of securing the construction of ways and installation of municipal services, and from time to time, or from securing by one, or in part by one, and in part by another, of the methods described in Mass General Law 41, Chapter 41, Section 81U," which that, I've got a copy of that, too, but that, that just talks about the types of security, which by now, we're all either current or former planning board members, and we've probably heard it ad nauseam, that it's a bond, it's cash, or it's third-party agreement, tri-party agreement.
So...
Right, Bill, did I get that right?
Yes.
We're just trading one piece of bread on one side of the sandwich for the piece of bread on the other side of the sandwich, so to speak.
A much bigger one.
A oversimplification, and maybe a hungry one, I mentioned that, but...
But it's a bigger chunk for me to come up with on the fund.
Right, right, I understand. So, but effectively, it's, it's, we're not moving any mountains here.
No, we're not changing any numbers. We're not making any changes to the plan. It's, it's not going to, we're not doing anything to the actual approved subdivision plan. It's not like we're moving roads or changing any dimensions or anything like that.
Steve, does, do the homes have foundations, or are they flabs?
They're probably going to be all foundations. There's no, there's no indication of any problem with water table over there, or, you know, high-water table, or...
Ground frozen now? Do you have to wait for it to thaw, or can you get in there and...
No, I think, I, I saw my excavation contractor just this week, and he's, he's ready to go back there. I actually also have the, I also purchased the, the slab and vault for the transformer, but it's at the concrete manufact, the, the precast concrete manufacturer. It's there, it's paid for. I'm not having it delivered, because it would just be sitting there and getting snowed on right now.
Your Mass General Law?
Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81U.
You can't release the lot.
Uh, hold on, let me see if I got a...
Did I read that wrong?
Pretty much, I got a copy of it here.
Starts from 81 and goes so in 80.
Uh, let's see. "By endorsement of its approval of a plan, a planning board shall require that the construction of ways and the installation of municipal services be secured by one, or in part by one, and in part by another, of the methods described in the following clauses, 1, 2, 3, and 4, which method or combination of methods may be selected, and from time to time varied by the applicant." And I'm not going to read every single one of these verbatim, but number one is by proper bond, sufficient in the opinion of the planning board to secure performance of the construction of ways and the installation of municipal services required for the lots. Number two, by deposit of money or negotiable securities, sufficient in the opinion of planning board to secure performance of the construction of ways and the installation of municipal services required for the lots in the subdivision, yada, yada, yada. Number three, by a covenant executed and duly recorded, which is what we have now. Oh, actually, there's four. By delivery of, oh, by delivery to the planning board of an agreement executed after the recording of a first mortgage, also, that would be the tri-party agreement. So four is tri-party, three is covenant, two is deposit of cash and negotiable securities, and one is bond, so they consider that.
I'll read through that section. I believe it was...
So that's, that's the point of the covenant, is that it prohibits building on lots until the binder and the utilities are in place. Since he's exchanging the covenant for cash, the covenant doesn't apply anymore, and this section 19 says that the planning board can release the lots once the subdivision is secured by, by the cash.
And the amount of security, as Jeff shows in his breakdown of it, includes the cost of the paving and the installation of underground utilities, and it includes them at a far more expensive cost than what it's going to actually end up costing me.
So what's your plan on getting this money back? Normally, it's when the street's accepted, you know, we would give it back, but this is going to be a private road.
No, I think you're...
Too far ahead.
Have to read through that section.
So here's how it would work. If, if I get a favorable vote tonight, I would bring in the security, the town treasurer would verify that the security is there, and then the lots would be released. I sell the lot.
It's just one lot we're talking about, isn't it?
Oh, we, we, this would be, this would be, this would be all the remaining lots.
All remaining lots.
So four lots.
Four lots.
Um, so I sell the lot to this gentleman who wants to start building a house. He pays me. I go and pay down my, my bank, where I'm getting the money to give you guys the security. The security sits there. The $123,000 sits there until I get enough of the project done where I think it's worthwhile, where I have Mr. Walsh come back out, do another inspection, and then I submit in writing a request to have the amount of the security you guys hold reduced, commensurate with whatever work has been done. If I get the paving done, and I get the underground utilities done, and it's the end of April, then I'll come and see you guys in May, and I'll say, "Hey, Jeff's been out there, he set the road, binder's good to go, utilities are good to go, please cut loose X amount of dollars," which Mr. Walsh would decide what is, what that would be. That's not for me to decide. Does, I believe that answers your question? Okay.
Talking about the entirety of it. Like, when you want your, your entire surety back, usually it's when the road is accepted.
Oh, when you get your as-built. When you get your as-built.
Okay.
When the town gets an as-built. That's the fin, that's the final step. It's, it's no different, it's, even though it's a private road, that part of the process isn't any different. The only difference is, it doesn't go to town meeting for approval to be accepted as a public way. But I still have to, I still have to provide an as-built, and Mr. Walsh or the town engineer still has to go out, verify that it's completed, that the way, it's completed to the design as submitted in the, in the approved subdivision plan. That's it. And then, I don't know, I guess we pop some champagne, you guys get to take it off the list, you know, of the, of the five. I don't want to be one of the...
The eternal five?
Yeah, exactly. Very good. Very, very well said, Mr. Clark. I don't want to be one of the eternal five, where we sit there and it's there every meeting. This is a small project. I should be, I mean, I should have most of this done by the fall. And then there's just a question of the, the final coat, the asphalt coat. They say you should let the binder coat winter over, one winter, before you put the top coat on. So that would probably be the only thing that would push us into 2025, would be waiting for that, to have that put on and...
Covenant would be voided out if we agree to the, this new surety?
Yeah. Yeah. This would, this would replace the covenant.
Was that thing in the covenant bill that would be added or something?
No, we're just changing the covenant for cash.
No. I think some of the things you might, I can't think of off the top of my head, some of the things that might concern you, but I think you might be thinking of things that were written in the decision, and the decision is still recorded, and that document still lives on after the covenant is, I don't know what the word is, but...
Mass General Law, read through it. I have a section switching to the cash part.
I, I've got it right here. I can give you a copy of it.
I read it.
And I think the board's regulations are consistent with state law in that respect.
Yeah, it's pretty much word for word.
Yeah, you could tell it's word for word, because that, that weird sentence that I read there...
Effectively, this is something that could have been done, as opposed to a covenant at the beginning.
Oh, yeah.
So we're not really, again, we're not moving any mountains here.
But they don't really want you releasing the lots. Like Guy Horn said, what happened if he dies, and somebody kind of stuck?
It looks pretty, it looks pretty healthy right now.
I know.
Let's say I meet some woman that just sweeps me off my feet, and decides to leave my wife and kids, and pick up and go to, go to, I don't know, Pago Pago, and live in a hut near the sea, and you guys can't figure out what happened to me. You've got $123,000 cash...
Sounds like a bad nature.
Sitting in the town coffers to get this thing done. So that's the what-if.
Okay. So what's the board's pleasure? Somebody want to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, so that Mr. O'Trover doesn't have to get any vaccinations for his trip to the South Pacific, I would move that we accept the cash surety in lieu of the covenant for Sophie's Way subdivision.
Totalling 123,000.
123,000.
So you're in the access and everything paid off.
Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. You got your wish, Steve. Right now, from you, nothing?
What's that?
The covenant, we don't have any money in, in bond, do we?
No, I would come here and we would do the calculation based on, we would figure out what the lot release amount would be, and I would, just like on previous subdivisions that we've had, I come in, Jeff has, doesn't, does this calculation, and then he breaks it down by lot, and I cut a check for that amount each time I come in for a lot. But I come in for the lots one at a time, so I don't have to come up with that money all up front like I'm doing now. So...
Do we have to vote to release the lots now? We don't, we don't do that until he gets the check and...
Right.
It's all secured and everything's in the escrow account and all that, so he would come back at that point.
Well, he doesn't need to see lot releases now.
Right. But he could do that after he gets...
No, he doesn't have to at all.
He doesn't have to?
No. This section says, upon acceptance...
Not according to town bylaw.
By the planning board of the new guarantee, all applicable lots shall be released from the covenant.
Oh, okay. All right.
So you don't need to come back.
Right. So once I bring it in and you verify, then...
They're, they're all released.
Right. So, but I need, don't I need some sort of instrument that gets recorded at the registry that tells the registry that the covenant has been released?
Yes, we can discharge the covenant if you want.
That, that's what I would need.
Okay.
Right. So once I provide the funds and the funds are, once the town treasurer verifies the funds are there, I just need something to release the covenant, because that's, would stop title from being able to change.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I'm going to hang around. It's nothing good on TV anyway.
Next item on our agenda, number six, request for extension of the Fish Road definitive subdivision plan.
That had a two-year approval period, so the time is up. Mr. Angelovich is out of town at the moment, so I've contacted him to come back to our next meeting.
When did, when did it run out? Has it run out yet, or...
No, not yet.
Not yet. But it...
I think it's at the end of February.
Okay. That's just for that cul-de-sac part of it?
Yes.
That's not the growth facility, is it? Is that the growth facility, too, or is that just a...
That was, the growth facility was a special permit, which had a three-year approval period.
This one was round off.
The subdivision was the two lots and...
Cul-de-sac.
Wasn't there supposed to be some sidewalk installed on one side of the road?
Yes, there was.
Okay. But none of that work has been done yet, right?
No, it's still the same.
Still the same.
I don't think they're doing anything with it.
I know he was working with the highway superintendent on the sidewalk issue. I don't know where it stands at the moment. I think they wanted to put it in the right-of-way of the road, not on private property.
Okay. So we're, we're basically waiting for Mr. Andrew Lewis to get back and possess it.
Okay. We have anything else that is at the point where something is expiring, or is this the only thing that's on the calendar for the month of February? I mean, Jesse wrote, but that's not until the summertime, I think, isn't that it?
We gave, we gave him a year, but then he got hung up at the story department because of the...
Yeah, I don't think that's, that's immediate. I think that's, that's further down the road, but...
Right. The JD and D on Oxford Ave.
Yeah.
I contacted Mr. Ochokey about that, and he's waiting for National Grid, I think, to get in there and provide power, but I think most of the work is done.
Everybody's waiting for National Grid. They're waiting two years.
Okay, so it takes care of that. Discussion of resubmission of the shared driveway standards zoning amendment, next on our agenda. Is that in the, what great pine business?
So Richard asked me to put this on the agenda for discussion, and, you know, so I just, so, and you may recall, this issue came up when we reviewed that common driveway on all subjects.
We did have this on the warrant, I think it was, 2022?
Yes. So I just took the same language to give it to you again, and you can tweak that if you like, but...
I, I think it's significant to note that it did receive a majority, in terms of majority vote, where it failed, it was at two-thirds. And I might be overstating this a bit, but I think that was largely a result of an individual's comments from the floor. That individual is well-respected in the community, shall we say, and was, I think, able to sway enough people so that we came up short as far as the two-thirds are concerned. My concern, and I think we went through this with the regards to the Southbridge Road issue, is that, you know, they are, as I term them, cheap, cheap streets. It's an attempt to make a cheap street. And to circumvent the rules and regulations... It's an attempt to make a cheap street and to circumvent the rules and regulations that we have responsibility for. Again, I hate to say this, and it may be an exaggeration, but what I look to as an example is something that I see as private streets in Worcester. And some of them are in horrible condition. I mean, some are better and some are worse, and some of them are just absolutely look like bomb sites. Uh, and I don't think, in the town of Dudley, we want to have that kind of thing, if you will, or that appearance or that sort of a situation. Obviously, some of those in Worcester, for example, I'm not sure how emergency vehicles can get through there, certainly not quickly and not easily. And I don't, again, see us wanting that sort of situation here in the town of Dudley. And I think Mr. Edmondson spoke eloquently at the last meeting in terms of stormwater management. You know, where does all this stuff go? We've kind of tossed it out there and let it be wherever it is, because we don't have any regulation.
I mean, Bill, um, your professional opinion, I mean, like, in the years that I've been on the planning board, the only, only people I've seen come before us and ask for shared driveways or common driveways have been developers. It's not typical that you see a, a resident or homeowner or property owner come in and say, "I want to build a common driveway for myself and my neighbor." It's typically developers. Would you agree or disagree?
Well, yeah, I guess I would, it can vary. Homeowners can, somebody could divide a lot and need to do a common driveway and, you know, propose it. It was disappointing, so it could depend on the situation.
But the price of houses, people are doing it more and more.
Well, I didn't think there was anything wrong with what we had, what we had put forth last time. I mean, do you want to, you want to try going forward with the same thing? Do you want to tweak it or change it?
Uh, I would, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that, uh, we'd like to see us go forward with what we have. If anyone sees something in there that they think will, uh, be objected to at town meeting, and maybe we want to see if we could sharpen up the language on that or maybe make a change.
I know one of the questions that came up at town meeting was what, what happens to all the, all the existing common driveways in town?
Their grandfather.
It would be, right.
Yeah, we, we tried to explain that on the floor, but I don't think everybody believed it.
Yeah, I understand, I, I know that we did, and, uh, you know, maybe shame on us, we did do two, uh, better salesman's pitch, or I would try to speak to that if that were to come up. I think it's taking care of a gap right now, where effectively, you know, those folks came before us and they were looking for a recommendation from us, but the recommendation had no standing. You know, it was just saying, "Oh, yeah, we like, you know, this looks nice on paper, you know, happy day, go about your business." And then they go back to the zoning board of appeals. And we are no longer involved, or we had real, no, really had no real involvement.
So this bylaw would actually be under the jurisdiction of the ZBA if this were to pass? Not the planning board?
Yeah, but it would be something that we would have in place.
Correct.
We would change that in the bylaw, change it to special permit from the, the planning boards, leave it to the ZBA.
There would be a separate, yes, you could do it as a zoning amendment, sure. The way it stands now is the ZBA has jurisdiction, but you could give it to the planning board if you wanted to.
I think the ZBA tried to kick it back to us last time. Only one of them showed up.
Nobody wants his football.
I'll take the football.
I mean, right now, the way it's written, it's, 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 it's a use by right for two houses. You only have to go to the ZBA if you want to put more than, more than two houses on a common driveway, so...
This should be going through us, the planning board, because we're the ones in charge of the roads and all that. It's technically a road that they're putting in.
Is there a provision that limits the length? The maximum length, and that was one of the things I really think...
Yeah, shall not exceed a distance of 500 feet.
That's about what, that's how big Bonner Road is, right, 500 feet? Some of those things can probably get pretty long, too.
So is, that class has 500 feet unless, so I think it could be greater than 500 feet if you get permission from the fire chief.
Yeah, or the, if you, I mean, if you're building a common driveway and you have a turnaround at the end and they have to send a fire apparatus down there and they can turn around to get back out, I don't think they're gonna have a problem, but if they're gonna back up 500 feet, I think they're gonna have a problem. Alright, so what's the board's pleasure? Would you like to try to send this one back to the town meeting? And the town meeting's in May?
Yes.
I would, Mr. Chairman.
I'll, I'll go along with you, Mr. Clark.
Do we need a motion? We don't give a motion, okay. Alright, I would move that we present at town meeting in May, a zoning, uh, a, what we call it, a zoning board of zoning amendment, zoning amendment, uh, with regards to shared driveway standards, to establish the design standards for shared driveways.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, I, that's a little disappointing, because I think that would cause some confusion on the floor at a town meeting, where we don't have a unanimous board in terms of support for this.
I can vote any way I want.
I know you can, and you did, and so noted.
So we have...
I can note how you voted any way I want.
We have four yes, four yes and one no?
Yes. Did you want to propose this same language again?
Yeah, I think, I think so.
So we'll have, have to have a public hearing.
Yep.
And we can modify it as we go forward through the public hearing process.
In case somebody has a different idea. Get the public's input.
That can always be amended on, on the floor.
Okay. Discussion, short-term rental bylaw. Is that right behind the driveway standards? I think it is.
For what section is that for? What section is that in?
Would be entering your business.
Your business? Oh, I see it, yep, okay. Thank you.
I'd like to commend the planner, there's a lot that has been added to and explanations provided for a lot of what is here. Uh, I think for the, for the betterment of it, if you will.
There were a number of questions in the, in the model that I think we needed to address, based on our own circumstances. So I, you know, took a shot at making those improvements, hopefully. Mr. Chairman, do you want to go through these individually, or what would be your, your preference? I mean, I think the board really needs to understand what's in here, so it might be a good idea to spend some time on it.
And then, once we, once we get, um, once we get this draft nailed down, then we would have the public hearing?
No, this would be a general bylaw, it doesn't require a public hearing.
Doesn't require.
And it's not a planning board sponsored article, it'd be the selectman who sponsored it.
So we would give it back to the board of selectmen?
Yes.
Okay.
Do they have any input on this?
They give it to us.
When we met with them, they said, you know, actually just at a joint process, but they said, no, let's just have the planning board.
And we trust you guys.
Yeah, my daughter had pink eye, couldn't make that move.
But it'll go back to them, and of course, since it's their article, they can...
They're resting it on our broad shoulders, gentlemen. There, there was a question raised, but Mr. Johnson, as I recall, as to whether the cost of doing this, we got way the benefit. But I, I think that was based on a number of these STRs that they understand existed in the town of Dudley. And I think we had some comment from the public that that number is very understated, and that the number is actually considerably more than...
I think he walked that back.
Walked that back a bit?
I think he did. I think, I think his initial comment was something along the lines of, "Do we really even need to do this? How many of these are out there?"
Yeah.
Almost, he, he kind of thought maybe we were trying to legislate something that doesn't need to be dealt with. And I think the argument was that maybe, no, you, you know, you'll wait till this problem before you have something in place that will help you deal with the problem. That's a pretty eloquent argument, I should have said that that night.
Well, you said it now, so you're on the record. I did have a question here, uh, and I think you might have anticipated, it looks like it's highlighted in yellow. Multifamily, only one of the dwelling units within a multifamily building may be registered as a short-term, this is like on page three.
Which section?
Uh, it's G under, oh, section three.
Okay, third page, right.
Yeah.
So, right, so the model bylaw has that language, which is highlighted in yellow.
Well...
And I have a comment there questioning that. And my comment was, you know, is that too restrictive to only allow one per multifamily dwelling? If you have a lot of units in a building, you're only letting one person do an STR.
Right, right.
So I don't know what your feeling is on that, if that's, if you like the model language, we can leave it or, um, we can change it.
I guess, my question would be, what do we, in a multifamily, how many could that be?
Well, a multifamily building is three or more.
Three or more, and the more is unlimited.
Unlimited, yes, sir.
Duplexes are two.
So if you had a 12-unit building, you could only do one. If you had a 30-unit building, you can only do one.
We don't have many 30-unit buildings.
Well, we're doing the mill, for example, which we had 59.
Yeah, sometimes, yeah.
But you're right, there aren't many large multifamily structures.
Most of them are four or less.
Alright, so, Mr. Chairman, you're comfortable with that as it is, then? I, I, I don't think it's objectionable as it is, but that's just a question as to what we...
I mean, we could, if we, if we institute this general bylaw and somebody has a problem with it, we can always make a change to it later on, right?
Sure.
Somebody comes forward and says, you know, "This is really hurting us." I mean, the only, the only institution I could see it hurting would be the mill, but, I mean, do we want the mill turning into Airbnbs? I don't know.
I would like the mill to turn into anything at this point, frankly.
Well, you know, a lot of times, people buy, well, I guess these would be rentals, but, um, I was gonna say, people often buy condos and then just rent them out, but...
Yeah, but not on a, not on a day-by-day basis.
Right, yeah, so that's probably not, not a factor here.
Yeah, because I, this wouldn't affect, like, if somebody wanted to, if somebody wanted to buy an apartment and, and lease it out for, on a year or a half-year basis, right? This is only if you're talking about, like...
Well, kind of medium is a, is a type of multifamily.
But if you're like, if you're...
It's a cutoff, like...
Yeah, when it says short-term, it's a week...
30 days.
It's a 30 days or less.
Yes.
Okay.
But unlimited in the number of times.
Right. So if you, if you have a, if you, if you wanted to rent your, if you had an apartment or a condo and you wanted to rent it, three months at a time, it doesn't fall under this bylaw? Three months or more?
Right, that would not be a short-term rental, that's correct.
Okay.
Other question I did have is, uh, and this is moving on to the next page at the very top. Upon enacting this bylaw, this bylaw, the owner, owners and operators shall have six months to bring, uh, short-term rentals into compliance. Uh, we, we want to give them an opportunity to appeal, I mean, referred a number of times just this evening, "I'm waiting for National Grid," uh, which, they seem to work to their own timetable. I don't know whether imposing the six-month restriction here without, and it doesn't reference any opportunity here that I can see for appeal.
The six months is basically making sure it's ADA compliant and has smoke detectors, things of that sort, right?
Right.
I mean, like, if you can't be ADA compliant, too?
Uh, I would think, I'd, um...
That's gonna be a tough one, then.
That would be a tough one, I don't know that that necessarily...
Well, you know, there's no grandfathering protection under a general bylaw. So any short-term rental would need to be brought into compliance with the bylaw, this bylaw. So there will be inspections that would take place. I don't know whether a short-term rental has to be ADA accessible or not.
I don't see what is in here, actually. You know, and, and if, if we're talking about an older building, that might be cost prohibitive.
So this bylaw is neutral on whether it has to be brought into ADA compliance? So if the code requires that, then, then it would have to be.
I, I would think someone who would be in need of that would look specifically for a building that was ADA compliant.
Right.
Just as you look for a motel that'll take dogs, for example, as opposed to...
So I added that text, um, under section K, upon adoption of the bylaw, which selectmen shall notify all owners of existing short-term rentals, uh, the unit, of, of the need to submit an application to registered units. I thought there should be some process to...
We have an application?
To know that they need to come into compliance.
Do we have an application form?
No, not yet. We can work on that once this is...
I'm sure that somebody else has come up with one.
I'm sure, yeah, it shouldn't be that hard.
The American Disabilities, Americans with Disabilities Act actually has a provision regarding short-term rentals. It says, "Short-term rental is not required for any complaint if it does not contain more than five rooms for rent and is occupied by the owner of the establishment." So if it's owner occupied and it's five rooms or less, it does not have to be.
Alright.
Five bedrooms?
Five rooms.
Five rooms for rent.
Five rental rooms.
Thank you. Audience is invaluable.
If they have a cellphone.
They have a cellphone. They're well-equipped.
Worldwide web.
Then, it goes going on to the next page, I think it is, there are a number of things here, uh, in terms of, things that might come up as concerns or issues, loud noises, et cetera, et cetera. Who do you, you know, each short-term rental show smoke detectors, who do you, do you go back to the selectmen and complaint? Why'd you complain, Bill, or does that be, you go to the, I don't know, does that work? Does this get back to them at some point in terms of the complaint?
I think it probably falls to the building commissioner.
Okay, who is, still, Nelson?
Yes.
I think the board itself would be able to have input also.
Some of them, yeah, depending on, and maybe even the police in terms of the loud noises and parking issues as far as some of that is concerned, but there's, I don't know, I just wanted to clarify whether it's going back to the selectmen. Who would in turn probably refer it to someone else, anyway?
Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, but weren't they still leaning towards it being a permit-type of, uh, situation where they would grant a permit, the selectmen would grant the permit?
Yes.
And it would come up for review?
Yes.
So that, that's your, that's your stick, basically. If you've got a number of neighbors that continue to have problems with the, you know, a situation that the selectmen could, could either not review the permit or revoke it.
Occupancy requirements, maximum number of occupants in a short-term rental shall be two for each bedroom. Uh, if you have a small child, it might be the parents and the child, that could be three.
Yeah, plus an additional two total.
An additional two total, okay, so you could get it up to two kids and...
Four, plus two, additional.
Two plus two.
Bill, I, I had a question on section 10B that's highlighted there. No new accessory dwelling units may be permitted for the purpose of becoming a short-term rental. So if somebody had a, if somebody built an in-law apartment in their house and then afterwards didn't need the in-law apartment because the in-laws never came or what have you, they couldn't use it as a short-term rental?
Right. So I, I was questioning that, too, you know? So I was wondering how you felt about this section. So the zoning bylaw requires occupancy of one of the units by the homeowner. So you, so, you know, any accessory dwelling unit in existence before the adaption of this bylaw could be rented out as a short-term rental. This text would prohibit anything involved after this bylaw is adopted.
That sounds like it comes from, like, Bosworth. The city of Bosworth has a regulation that says you can put an accessory dwelling unit on your property, but one of the stipulations is you cannot use that accessory dwelling unit as a short-term rental.
I see, maybe that's where it comes from. So I don't know how, how the board feels about that provision, I could go either way.
I mean, I, I think, I mean, if, if the situation that I just referenced was, you know, you, you built an in-law apartment, then something happened and the in-laws never came, but you got this extra place and you could, you know, you don't really want to rent it out full-time, but you want to rent it out part-time and get some funds, I, I don't think that's a bad idea.
I don't have a problem with that either, but...
Yeah, I think that, that could be permissible.
Good point. The zoning bylaw does not allow detached accessory dwelling units. It has to be within the home.
Right now, they don't.
Correct.
You may want to look at that at some point, too, because a lot of people do in the tiny houses and stuff like that. So...
Like, once people have to do permit inspections and not see any of these short-term rentals in town.
If they're gonna be ADA compliant, absolutely not.
If you go to waterfront property, it's actually pretty lucrative. I was kind of surprised when I saw how much, I went on Airbnb and I saw how much they were getting for a, a little place for the week on Reno Pond, where I grew up. I was quite shocked. Turns out if you're a city slicker, this is like, you know, this is like... Turns out, if you're a city slicker, this is like, you know, this is like a name.
Under Section 10 again, it says, "E, property is designated as problem properties, including a property that has previously had a license revoked or denied." We're putting that on the property, or shouldn't that be the owner? I mean, the property could change hands. So, the way I'm reading that is, is the property would no longer be eligible, even though there may have been a change in ownership and a change in stewardship and...
So there's a, there's a definition of problem property. It says, "A property that includes violations of building, fire, zoning, health, or sanitation codes, and often presents itself as a health hazard for public safety concern."
So it's been, licenses have been revoked and denied, but those things can be remedied?
I would, I would think so.
Right. So, the way, this doesn't seem to provide for that, you know, the remediation process here, it just says, "Property is designated as," and bang, that's it. It's off the books for good. It's my reading of it, anyway.
Yeah. Maybe we could add something to that, if you felt, until corrected.
A clause, yeah.
Deficiencies are corrected or something.
Yeah, you know, if the property can, now, the owner may be, be on repair or redemption, but the property might have some saving grace.
So would you like me to add some, something to that?
Something to that effect, I think, perhaps, you know? Wow, I like this, I think it's pretty good. And I commend the planner for bringing this forward, and I'm hoping that meets with the approval of the board of selectmen.
So this was the, this was the one that was put forth by the Central Mass Regional Plan?
Yes.
And you've just, these are all the comments that we're seeing on the right-hand side, those are your comments?
No, some of them are James'.
The ones in red are from Jeanne Wyro at CMAPC.
Okay.
They were in her model.
Okay.
She was raising these issues for each town to think about. And then the ones in blue, where it says P1, that's, that's me, Plan 1.
Okay.
A little better.
Any other questions that you wanted to call attention to, Bill, or?
Just, if you don't mind, go back to the beginning quickly and take a quick skim through here. So, on, on the second page, under K, the definition of short-term rental, the model says it can't be for less than two days, which means you couldn't do it for one night. And I thought that seemed rather restrictive, that there might be a lot of situations where somebody would only want one for one night, and if you didn't allow it, then you would be affecting the viability of these for homeowners, so, so I want to change it from two to one day.
Yeah.
So as long as you're comfortable with that.
And then you increase the, you increase the duration, the total duration, from not more than 24 to not more than 31.
Well, that, they were, the, the model was inconsistent, where up above it said, under D, 30 days.
Yep.
And then you had 24 days there.
Yeah.
The state law actually allows for 31 days, so that's what I went with in both.
Yep. Yeah, I read through all this, I just didn't know who was blue and who was pink, so now it kind of makes more sense.
What's that?
I said, "I read through all this, but I didn't understand who was the pink and who was the blue," but now it, it kind of makes more sense.
Okay. On the next page, B, the model has a limit on the number per town, and I didn't see the need to limit them townwide, but you could have, I suppose, but then you went into a situation where, I suppose, as the demand fell out of these and you're limited to 12, then, then you're really keeping people out, there's not enough availability, and I...
Find a diamond mine in West Dudley, and everybody wants to come stay overnight and look for their diamonds.
I wonder if the folks at Chase consider, I mean, they're looking to lease the property as short-term rentals.
So I had an annual renewal? Would you want to do longer than that, two years, three years, or is annual alright?
I think annual's good, because I think if anybody happens to fall into violation, it'll give them, you know, a chance to be identified very quickly, rather than somebody having two years to fall into violation.
You gotta register your dog every year.
Yeah.
I thought that took more money to the town.
Right.
How a complaints help, I dealt with right now, like, you just said dog, I remember that there was an Airbnb that had a dog complaint recently.
They what?
They had a dog complaint recently, last year, maybe, maybe even this year. I don't know, would it be this year, 'cause it just started? Last year, there was a, a dog that was off his leash and kept going over to the neighbor's house. Who deals with that complaint?
The Apprehensible Control Officer, part of the Police Department now.
Oh, now, we dealt with it, but I'm saying, like...
A lot of short-term rentals don't, don't allow paths, but if they do, then I think it's up to them to establish proper control of the dogs.
It's a leash law. Yes, there is.
On Section 7, CMAPC proposed one vehicle parking space per lawful bedroom. That seemed reasonable to me. Did you have anything else on that?
Sorry, I was looking at the I, I think I'm still under, sorry, number three?
Section 3?
Section 3, yeah.
What was that guy?
The fees in Section 3, 3I. The fee registration for a renewal, or a renewal of registration shall be $400 for the initial application and 200 for each year annual. And then I saw in blue you had, I think, 200 may be too low for initial application, it goes 400, 100 for processing, and 100 for each, each for three department inspections, fire, building, and health.
So there's really no, no science to, to that, if you think that's too low, we could increase it, or if it's too high, we could lower it. But I, that was my logic. You're gonna have three inspections, $100 per inspection seemed about right to me, and then, you know, the overhead of processing the applications, et cetera.
So, okay, so 400, so for, is the first time for whoever's doing it? If it changes hands and somebody else buys the property, they would have to come back in and repay the $400?
I wasn't thinking of that, I could add that in if you wanted to.
Yeah, that would be a new applicant, I would think.
So change of ownership, the new owner must come back in?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what I was thinking, it's like, yeah, if you change owners.
Okay.
Okay. Sorry, Bill, what was the, the other thing you were talking about?
Section 7 was, was regarding parking.
Yep. Okay.
We talked about Section 10, eliminate B.
We talked about that. Then we're at 12.
Annual inspections.
Yep.
12. Penalties. So I basically went with what was proposed in the model, except I have a $300 for second offense and each subsequent offense, no matter the length of time, so not just per 12-month period. And then, so what would be the penalty of failing to register? That'd be a cease and desist order, is something that, that I put in? I don't know how else you would get that situation under control.
And then if, if somebody didn't cease and desist, would they be paying a daily offense, or?
Yeah.
And that would just be the standard daily offense, that, like, if somebody was in a building code violation?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That's a, a non-criminal disposition.
Right.
Fine, I believe.
Yeah, it's like, whatever, $25 or $35 a day. Cease and desist? Yeah, like, if you have, if, if you're...
Chickens on your property and they send you a cease and desist, that'll be a $200 fine.
If you don't renew it.
It'd be $100 fine, then $200 for zoning for building violations.
So I have to look at the town bylaw for that one, I'm not sure if there's a fine schedule. But it would be whatever that bylaw sets, sets out.
That's for zoning violations, so this wouldn't be a zoning bylaw.
Correct.
What did you say, nondiscriminal, noncriminal?
Correct. There was an animal control bylaw, isn't there, that regulates that?
Short-term only. In the number 19, you were putting the room occupancy tax, is that the, is that the maximum that's allowed by the state?
6%, yes. They also have this second community impact surcharge of 3%, which I didn't think was really necessary, I'm not sure how you quantify community impacts from these, it's kind of difficult to justify an impact fee.
Yeah. We were getting a lot of police or fire calls to these places over and over again.
It's true.
But, I mean, that would, that, that would work itself out, I think, with the chiefs would just be going to the board of selectmen, saying that this is a problem.
Right.
So, they would identify it.
Okay, what's the state get?
What's that?
Right now, what does the state get?
It's 5.7, I think.
Oh, so we'd be getting more than the state?
I think so. So I believe the mechanism is the short-term rental operator collects the fee, submits it to DOR, and then DOR quarterly reimburses the town for the, for the charges in its own town.
Yeah, I think that's how it works on the mass meals tax, too, 'cause you can have, the town, individual towns can increase their, you know, like, the, the state has a mass meal tax of 6% or 7%, and then the town can have an additional 1% to 3% or something like that.
Yep. I might have them coffee.
Yeah, 6 cents or something.
It was 5 cents in Leinster, and I was like, "Why you guys got an extra penny?" That was a pound tax.
That's right, it varies from town to town.
Yeah.
So, from what I understand, Mr. Chairman, as we've had some changes to this as it was originally presented, so we would leave it to the planner to make the changes, and then we revisit this at our next meeting, perhaps, before we vote on it, that they're reasonable in tact to take?
Yeah, and then after that, we would, we would have to go back to the board of selectmen and present it to them, Bill?
That would be up to them, I think, we actually pass it along to them.
We could take a vote, and it would be our recommendation.
Right.
For the selectmen.
And if they wanted to have another discussion, then, of course, we would go back and do with them.
Okay, alright, that sounds good.
I think to the planner, Jane, for giving us that opportunity.
Get scared of that, we move on to standard business. Okay, we have discussion status report on finishing construction of and acceptance of uncompleted, unaccepted subdivision streets, including Pierpont Estates, Rocky Hill Estates, Country View Estates, Dobbin Farm Estates, Lion Estates, and Sophie's Way.
So, on Pierpont, I have had discussions with Tony Secura about trying to get the streets accepted at the annual, so I've given him the required information.
For the May, or?
In May.
Okay.
So it's possible, he could get everything done.
Is he that far along?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, good.
Have to, you know, have Jeff Wallace do the final inspections and do the question list of items, and then get the ASBIL plans submitted, et cetera.
Okay.
Then we go through the normal process of going to the selectmen for the, for the layout and...
But if, if something happened and we missed, or there was an issue and we didn't get accepted at May, we could still do it in, in September?
Yeah.
Okay, so either way, it could be done this year?
Yeah, that'd be nice, I think he wants to finish it up.
It's been a long project.
Only...
15 years?
Since 2006, I think, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's like 15-year project.
Yeah, it's a big development, though.
It is.
Okay.
On Country View Estates, the board voted to use the remaining escrow to fix the pump station.
Pump station, yeah.
So I believe that's going to be on the selectment's meeting on March 11th.
Okay.
They would vote to spend the money for that purpose.
That's a joint meeting, is it, March 11th?
Not, not officially.
Not officially.
But I know...
There are a number of issues there.
The shared streets and spaces project will be back on at that meeting, so certainly, I mean, I could, if you wanted me to make it a joint meeting, I could, I could ask the administrator.
Or you could, or you could just post it as a meeting of the planning board, so that if one, three people are here, it's not...
Right. I know a question came up, I think, at the last meeting, as to whether that was being plowed, Eisenhower. I drove by there after one of the more recent snowstorms, and it had been plowed, I didn't see who was doing it or how it had been done, but I guess something is happening up there to get the plows from...
Somebody that lives there could own a plow, too.
Well, it could very well be, I, the snow was moved, but who did it is, is, there's no forensic evidence to indicate here.
That's, that's the good thing, so nobody would be calling complaining that the road's not plowed.
Well, it did raise a question, it was, you know, when the highway department is out plowing, do they know which roads, you know, they should be plowing, and those that might, they...
No, they don't. I asked them about Paul Lane Circle Drive, oh, they didn't know it was private. They've been plowing and sanding it for years.
Well, maybe we shouldn't get too far into that, these people are getting benefit of that, and they are paying property taxes, so they should get some, some services, at least. So, once that's done, though, that's pretty much it, in terms of the escrow.
Well, we'd have to do, we'd have to do, we'd have to go to the residents and see if they wanted to do the betterment to get the ASBIL plan done and to get the road accepted, so that they don't have to worry about who's plowing the road.
Right, exactly.
Unless they want to take care of it themselves, if somebody is...
Well, and then the kids wouldn't have to walk up to the, the corner or the intersection to get on the bus.
I don't know if the bus will make it around that cul-de-sac, or not.
I don't know if maybe the bus is doing that, no, that's another question. I don't know, the bus is no road, it's a private road or not. Yes, there's nothing there, there's no sign that says "private way."
It just says...
In some places, you'll see the sign that says "private road."
Just says "Is an hour drive," that's it, so... But, yeah, I mean, that turnaround is mounded quite a bit, so...
They don't go down there?
No.
No.
Okay.
Alright, so we'll, for Lion's Estates, I spoke with the engineer on that project, sent him the information for street acceptance. I believe they're gonna try to finish it, finish the construction this fall, wait a winter for the pavement to settle, and then come back in the spring for acceptance of Lion's Estates.
So it'd be next...
Truman Drive.
It would be next year.
Next year.
This year. Oh, Lion's Estates, I was thinking of Country View Estates.
No, that's, we were just talking about that, that's Eisenhower.
Okay.
Lion's is Truman Drive.
Alright.
So that could be a year from now, get, get that accepted.
And anything on Legacy Landing, Country Club Acres?
No.
I'm sorry, I'm kind of jumping down on the next one.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Alright, well, I guess we're there. Legacy Landing, Country Club Acres, SCP Solar, JDNA you spoke of earlier, Stevens Mill we spoke of earlier, and the solar project on the landfill, and anything else to refer to those?
At one of the last selectmen's meetings, I forget which one it was, it might be the one, not the last one, but the one previous to that, the town administrator mentioned that there'd been communications with Stevens, the Camden Group, and the issue was still interest rates, and I don't know whether there's been any, I was surprised, that was the first time I heard that there'd been some regular communication, I wasn't aware of that. Has there been any other communication since then?
Nothing.
From what I understand, the interest rates haven't changed.
Not today.
No, not today.
You know anything on the landfill?
They're working hard on it, I, you know, was down there a couple weeks ago, and...
I go every Saturday.
Side by sides, ripped down everything.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of stuff going on over there on Saturdays, but...
I know.
Yeah, I mean, it looks like, it looks like it's pretty close, I mean, there's, all the piles of stuff that was there is diminished to, you know, minimal piles, so I can't imagine so I can't imagine there's much left panels to set up, it looks like they're doing all the conduits.
They're adding more and more.
They're adding more panels?
Yeah.
They're not exceeding the approved plan, are they? I wouldn't think so, but.
Just seeing them setting up more and more.
Okay.
So, do we have an expected completion date for that, this year, right, '24?
Let me, let me check.
Just in February now, and it looks like it's pretty close.
Yeah, 10 months.
Yeah, but their special permit was sometime in March, doesn't it?
Expires.
I assume that's when they got it, I assume it expired the same day, not the end of the year.
Oh, no, I just, lead you to, 10 months in terms of the calendar year, but you're right, what is the date in terms of expiration?
I'm waiting for them to put up the facts. I see those people walking their dogs up there.
So the two years expires on June 8th, 2024?
This year.
June 8th.
So we'll hear something from them before then, if it, if they're not done.
Right.
Next thing on the agenda, planner's plate, anything, Bill?
A couple of things, the Economic Development Committee is working on a gateway plan for the area from, on West Main Street, from the French River to, to basically Dip and Donuts. There's a survey, a community survey that's been posted on the website, so feel free to go ahead and fill that out. And anybody who might be watching this, it's right under the News and Notices section on the homepage of the website, so you can click on the link and get to the survey.
Do we have hard copy of that? I know with the past, we've had surveys, we've put some hard copies down.
Yes, there are some here in Town Hall. I think some were left off at the library as well. So please, fill that out. I mentioned the Shared Streets and Spaces project for the Airport Road, Tanyard, Delphico Road. The plan has been revised, the new plan is on the website. It eliminates the dead end of Tanyard, which was the big issue at the Selectmen's meeting, so they reschedule that for March 11th, so people can come and comment on the revised plan. And then St. Anthony Road, we are hoping to bring that forward for acceptance this, at this annual town meeting. We're waiting for the survey, so we can get the ASBIL plans done, so that may be coming to you for review.
It's up off of Raymond Street, if that, okay.
Yep, so that's it.
Excuse me, Bill, was there, did you want to make mention of something that pertains to our parking lot situation over here, or the other side of it?
Oh, the, the fun zone?
The no-fun zone.
So we're working with Michael Radner on a, on a plan for that area, which would include a new playground and a new sort of passive open space area with a community gathering space. And some, you know, it's a beautiful design with landscaping and a nice passive sitting area. So he's finishing up sort of the, I guess, the final schematic design for that, with a cost estimate, so we'll know.
Was this the three options that were in the hallway before?
We've narrowed it down to one, so it would be one plan that's going forward. And then.
Not the one with the fountain, is it? Is it the one with the fountain?
Fountain?
No, there's no fountain in this, but I don't think, it's sort of a combination of the three. There wasn't one that really sort of stood out, so we're trying to make it so that it works, you know, the best way possible.
Is this, are we, where, do we, you know where we are at the, at the fundraising level for this, are we close to being where we need to be, or?
The, the plan would be to take the plan and the cost estimate and apply for state grant. I was, I believe the town has gotten a large donation from the Nancy Walcovert estate, which would be enough to cover the local match for this project, so we probably break it out into phases. So do Phase 1, which would be the actual active playground space, and then go back for Phase 2, which would be sort of the passive area.
Okay.
So, hopefully, we can get that grant and get that project under construction, perhaps in 2025.
Comments from the Planning Board?
Let's take a full disclosure, I mentioned to, just scaling earlier this evening, I, it stands now, I've been meeting with two members of the CMRPC tomorrow in this building at 10:30, and the discussion was to focus on the no-fun zone and possibility of some grant options that they might have available to us.
Feel free to see if they come up with something else.
I don't know what, you know, no guarantees, but I've had an exchange of emails over a period of time, and there seems to be something that I guess they think might fit or have some application, so. More the merrier in terms of the funding of it. CMRPC quarterly meeting will be on March 14th. Full disclosure, I've also been in touch with CMRPC, asking them what the possibility might be of doing something with the eight dams that the town of Dudley has. This is something that was triggered by what I'd seen happening in Rhode Island, in terms of some of these dams. Again, the industrial revolution, so-called, in the United States begins here in New England, thanks to our rivers and the dams that were on those rivers, and in Rhode Island, they've been able, in some cases, to actually take some of those existing dams, if you will, and reducing actual clean energy, if you will, hydropower as a result. Again, what I understand, the dams at Dudley may not be as pristine as we might like them to be, but it seems that it might be worth just kind of looking at it in a general sense, at least, to see if there's any possibility. So that's still kicking around. The last I got was, there's apparently some Milltown caucus, I don't know if Bill is familiar with that? Trish had indicated she was either bringing that up or had brought that up, and I don't know what the outcome was there in terms of discussion. I think they're looking at it as not just Dudley as such, but other towns, many of them, obviously, in the Blackstone River Valley, having access to the river, that river, which once was called the hardest-working river in America. That's it from it.
Okay, Bill, I know you sent out the Central Mass Regional Planning annual. What do they call it?
Districts Planner Training Collaborative, yes.
I don't know, I've talked with Mr. Clark, he has a, a previous date that he can't make that, but is anybody else thinking about going to it, it's on March 16th, I believe it is, Saturday?
Cross one?
Yeah. Okay.
You'd like to go? Okay.
I'll get back to you, I'll let you know.
I was, I was planning on going, as far as I know right now, my, my schedule's available, so I think I would go.
Okay.
There was three, three things on there that piqued my interest, so I would like to go and see, you know, see if I can get, I, I looked at their schedule, and it looks like you can get, I can get all three in one day, so that worked out kind of good.
I would ask you to bring a shopping bag with you and see what you can bring.
See what you can pick up? Yeah, so I could do that. So, Bill, would we just sign up ourselves on the, on the website for that, or does the town have to do it for us?
I think you would sign up.
So we would just sign up normally?
Right, and then I'll talk to the treasurer about getting the, the check cut.
The checks, okay. And what is the cost of that? I don't remember.
Yeah, it was $100, maybe?
I thought it said $90 per.
Ninety, okay.
$90, all right. I haven't been in probably five years, more than that, probably seven years or eight years, so. All right, comments from the audience? We're getting a no. Next regularly scheduled meeting would be March 12th?
I'd like to correct that, I forgot there were 29 days in February. So it's actually March 13th.
Okay.
Oh, lucky 13th.
That would, that would make it work with the 11th meeting for the Board of Selectmen.
Right. So my apologies, hope, hope nobody would not check on that later.
Okay, approval of consultant vouchers, payment of bills, we have a Quinn Engineering invoice number 2 for peer review of Dudley Housing Authority Site Plan, $855.50, is that in here?
Eight, eight eighty-five fifty.
Eight eighty-five fifty, so it's under invoices.
Chairman, I would move that we pay the Quinn Engineering invoice number 2 for the amount of $885.50 for the Dudley Housing Authority Site Plan review.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous?
No, I didn't, I'm gonna go against it.
Oh, sorry. We have four to one.
Okay.
There's, there was like $300 in there just for planning, for printing costs, for plotting costs.
Oh.
I don't remember that, that drawing set being that large, first of all, and most people do things on the computer screen nowadays, so.
Is that something we should pursue as an issue with them going forward?
Well, we don't use these guys all the time.
We've seen invoices from them in the past.
This is the second one we've had.
The second one, okay.
And I think it would probably be the last one, too.
All right, well, that takes care of that issue.
We'll be doing the oversight, so there'll be other invoices.
Oh, there will be.
When that gets underway.
Okay. So could we just put, could we just tell them that we're gonna question if we get another invoice that has blue printing costs?
Sure.
Other town notices correspondents? Yeah, got a conflict of interest that we have to update.
Yeah, just remind you to.
Yeah, if everybody hasn't done it, I think I'm tardy on that one, so I'll get it done.
I read that, that's like due next year, all right?
No, you have to do it every year, it's a two-year cycle.
There's another thing, there's, there's one that's a full-blown A to Z, and then there's A to B.
That's the two-year, and then the odd year is acknowledge you've read something, I think.
Yeah.
It's an acknowledgement form.
It says due next year, though, I thought, if I read the date on it.
No, there was a requirement, like, Town Clerk is trying to get everybody on the same schedule, for her record purposes.
But you don't have to, you don't have to print it out anymore and bring it into her, you just keep track of it through the website, yeah. Okay.
All right, if there's nothing else, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn, do we have a second? Motion to adjourn, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You have a.
Okay, thank you.